401 and 1 says 356. I don't know if it's Apple time or PC time. Apple time on 1 has me at 4:01. So Jonathan is here. It is 4 o'clock and I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not sure what has happened. I'm looking at the screen that says Zoom. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. That's what I do. Oh, there we are. Okay. Hi, Sonya. Hi, Jonathan. Hi, Carolyn. Thank you all for being here. Apologies for missing the last meeting. And it looks like the bulk of what we have to do tonight is actually fairly easy because you guys did it all in my absence at the last meeting. So I don't, in terms of getting through the agenda and on, and in terms of keeping up with the schedule for tonight, potentially for the school handbook, would there be any objection to moving down to 3.8? And I will ask Mrs. Whip if there is a note, an administrative contract, sorry, administrative content that says Sonya looking at this possibly woven into the standards for student behavior? Is this something that the violence and substance abuse policy, are we keeping that for the school handbook? Or are we going to? Need to unmute yourself, please. Sorry.
I'm not exactly sure why it's a standalone policy.
I do not know myself. I don't, if the provisions, I don't have any problem with it being so. I don't know if Polly does or anyone else on the school committee. I'm just looking at the notes that's there and on chance that we want to get it on that school handbook schedule. I didn't want to have it fall to the last tonight and get. Carolyn, please, just shout out, but you'll have to unmute.
Okay, I unmuted. Ed, as I was going through, because there was an agenda item that was personnel, violence and substance abuse policy.
There is still one, yes.
Okay, so when I went into that actual policy and started looking around, I have some notes in there as to how and why this came up. This policy existed in two places in the handbook, as we remember from an earlier meeting. And it was in the school committee section. Mariah, if you don't mind pulling up the draft of that so we can, and Ed, if you don't mind if I kind of jump to 3.6?
I don't mind at all.
Okay, then, so it was identified as being in two places in the manual and the committee had to decide where it belonged. And Mariah, if you could pull up the copy of, not the actual policy, but the working one for this agenda. There it is, 4013. Okay, so Mariah, see the little note sticky pad thing? If you could please click on that. So I went back and I had the same question you did, Ed. What, how are we discussing this? So it was back in May that we saw it in two places. And Mariah was going through the exercise of cleaning up the manual and it was decided that it probably belonged in the student section. Then in a early June meeting, I had a note that Sonya was going to review the policy as she was going through the first, the student policies. Then it was discussed that perhaps since we had a drug-free workplace policy, we could merge them for the purposes of the staff. Because a question had come up, do we, does this apply to staff, to students? And we were trying to answer the question, why is it in the school committee section? So what I did in part of my exercise of do we merge these, do we have separate staff policies? Is I started looking around at what other districts were doing. And really, the only reference I could find in most, in most districts to violence was the reporting thereof. So what to do if a student experiences violence on campus, for example? And I came across a policy almost identical to our violence and substance abuse policy in the Charahoe district, and it was under school committee. And what they did is they called it a statement of the school committee. Mariah, I kind of put it, if you want to drop the note. So what they had was the school committee's statement on violence and substance abuse. And basically, it's a statement by the school committee that lives within their policy manual saying that we don't tolerate violence and substance abuse and will stand beside, stand behind any decision made by the administration if and when this happens. So I'm going to guess that that's why it existed in the school committee section of the policy manual that Mariah just migrated over to board docs. Now I'm questioning, does it belong in the student section? So that's where I got with this.
Okay.
Sorry to, you know, muddy it up even further.
No, it's fine. I don't, I appreciate your research. I don't know, John seems to have joined in, so we can ask him what distinction, if any, there is between a statement, a school committee statement and a school committee policy.
Okay, I don't know. How much, John, did you hear of why?
I didn't hear any of the, I apologize.
Okay.
So we are looking at it. I was bringing this up in terms of the note that was attached. So this is a, I had understood it to be a policy which reads violence and substance abuse. It has been, has been brought up a couple of times and that appeared in two different places. So in terms of migrating everything over into board docs, Carolyn and Mariah have been very diligent about reducing and eliminating redundancies and we can only have one policy per assigned number, et cetera. So the question is now where to place this. It was taken out of line. This is item 3.8 on the agenda. I took it out of order in that there was an accompanying note that it may have been kind of subsumed into standards for student behavior. But I took it out of order just wanting to be sure that if we needed to do something to it now, that we got it in this meeting because it would have to be on for a first read for tonight for, in order to keep the student handbook on track for September. So Carolyn has just briefed us that there is a similar, if not identical, policy that is in the Charahoe, sorry. There is a similar, if not identical, what appears to be a statement in the Charahoe School Committee Policy Manual. And I don't know, maybe this is just all a digression. I don't know what, I don't have any objection to this. I don't know that anyone does. We don't know where to place it. And if my bringing it up was just in terms of, again, in terms of the student handbook, so if we don't need to have it changed or altered in any way, then perhaps we don't even need to get into these digressions tonight.
I mean, I don't think that you need to alter it. You know, it should be, something can be in the, remember who the audiences are. The handbook, the audience for the handbook are the students and parents, whereas the audience for our policies is society in general, be it parents, members of the community, a court in a legal case. So I'm not troubled that it's in two different places. If that helps, you know, explain, I mean, we shouldn't call it a statement one place and a policy somewhere different. We should be consistent with regard to that. But I mean,
What is the distinction between, does the statement have the force, have the force of a policy? Or what sort of distinction is there between the two?
You know, nobody's ever asked me that question, but typically when it becomes to legal matters, there are policies which are written guidance in how to behave in a certain search circumstance. There are procedures which are unwritten rules who are how you behave in a certain circumstance. I think a statement, by contrast, is more an expression of your belief. It's a statement that I want world peace. It's a policy that I'm not going to allow, you know, violence in my schools and so forth.
Okay.
I mean, this, this looks more like a, you know, a statement because it doesn't give, really give directives to the staff to do anything.
Yes, I agree. And I think it makes sense that I'm going to suspect that ultimately the Charahoe connection means that somehow it was, they arose at the same time between Charahoe and Little Compton via your office.
Yes.
So returning to what would be the urgency, if any, to deal with this tonight, Mrs. Whip, is this something that, and please refresh my memory as to whether or not this statement also appears in the handbook?
The statement does not.
Okay, is this something that is in any way that we need to deal with in relation to the student handbook timeline?
Well, I think that the issues relating to violence or substance abuse would be covered by items already in the standards for student behavior. So I don't think that they're not covered. I just, I don't know, I mean, I don't know exactly what I personally would be using the violence and substance abuse, the 6017, which is not the one you have up right now. I don't know when I would be referencing that, but I guess it could be there for legal issues is what John is saying.
I mean, it's an aspirational, we're good people, we have values, it's kind of like a mission. It's almost like a mission statement type. That's why they, by the way, use it as the word statement, a mission statement. It's the same here. I mean, I think this is all aspirational, but it's not something that's prescript, you know, prescriptive that tells, you know, Sonya, if a student does this, do that. Or it doesn't tell Carolyn, if an employee does this, we do that.
Okay. And Carolyn and/or Mariah, presently this statement is within the school committee section. Is that still the case?
It is presently in the student section.
Okay, and the thought is that, given that it is a statement and not a policy, it's, as with Charahoe, belongs back in the school committee section?
Potentially, and only because it existed in both places in the prior manual. So it was deliberately put in two places before.
I'm with Ed that it belongs in the school, I'm with Ed that it belongs in the school committee section because it's an expression of your philosophy.
Yeah, and John, I only added the statement piece of it when I was looking around at other districts and saw what Charahoe had done and that the wording was so similar. And that other districts under their student sections don't seem to have a violence and substance abuse policy. They, there's, you know, drug-free workplaces under the personnel sections, but yeah, I couldn't.
In addition of our getting our federal grant money. Yep.
May I suggest that, and in as much as this is the statement, does this even fall within the purview of the policy subcommittee, John? I don't know. But I was going to suggest that because we've been referring to this as the violence and substance abuse policy, that we retitle it so that we make it clear that this is perhaps something like the school committee statement on violence and substance abuse.
I agree.
Is that something that we would undertake just at the school committee meeting as though it were a policy being changed, Sean? Is that a recourse?
Yes.
Okay. Polly, would you, do you have any thoughts on on this at all?
No, I mean, I guess I, I mean, why do we, it's fine. I just don't see it as having teeth. I mean, I guess it gives our opinion that we're against violence and substance abuse, but I mean, who isn't? Like, there are a million other things where it should be against as well, and we don't have statements about those things. So by having this and not a statement about some other abuse or whatever, are, are we minimalizing something else? I don't, I don't know. I don't see the value in this as a whole, if we don't have a whole bunch of statements about what we're for and against.
I take your, your point is really well taken. I don't know. I think that there is a perception conundrum in that if we vote to do away with this, are we then making a statement in support of violence? You know, I mean, the more appropriate recourse might be just to issue additional statements rather than to remove this one. I don't know.
And where do we stop, though? Right? I mean.
Well, I stop in October. You're welcome.
We have to get a lot of work done between now and October, by the way, folks.
I know.
Can we just absorb this? Can we just say that the sentiment was absorbed in the student's, whatever it is, standards for student behavior and whatever staff policy we have regarding this?
The answer to that is yes, you can do either. There's no right or wrong answer with regard to this particular issue.
I mean, believe me, I'm against substance abuse and violence.
I'm glad to hear that.
I mean, from a student perspective of my policing it from the, from the principal perspective, I think that everything in there is embodied in the student behavior policy. I don't think it's making the sentiment go away, but I understand.
And from the staff perspective, you have the harassment policy and you have a drug-free workforce policy.
I mean, I just, I can picture someone looking at this and saying, well, boy, they've taken, you know, they've made a statement against violence and substance abuse. Why haven't they made a statement against racism or, you know, some, some other topic that might come up? And I don't want to look like we're not making the appropriate statements.
And I think, I think it's a fair point that you're making, and I think that it's totally at the discretion of the committee. If the committee wanted to spend every week, today we do racism, tomorrow we do gender bias, next week we do, you know, environmentalism. The committee can issue all the statements it wants, but again, they're all aspirational statements. They're not something that tells Lori or, or, you know, or John or fourth grade teacher or third grade student what to do.
Right.
Polly, I am more than happy to, you know, dispose of this however you best believe it taken care of. I agree that I think that this, the sentiments that are expressed herein are also expressed elsewhere. And if you want to just propose that we somehow say that it's been, you know, now expressed elsewhere, that's, I'm happy to do that, whatever you'd like.
I feel like that's safe, a safe thing to do, and it keeps us out of issuing a million statements and risking missing an important one.
Okay. Mariah, is this on the agenda for a first read in any way for the regular meeting tonight? Sorry, I'm looking at the, the four o'clock agenda and not the regular.
This policy is not. It was put on the policy subcommittee so that we could review it for this exact conversation. So we could figure out if we wanted to retire it when we do end up adopting or, excuse me, amending the standards for student behavior.
Sounds like we can just put it on for August then as a separate standalone thing and not have it even in discussion with the standards for student behavior. We'll just put it on August. Or John, do we just let it go? Do we just take it out? I mean, it doesn't have any.
The committee, the committee is the body that has to take it out.
Okay, that's fine. I was gonna, if it was something in changing and altering policies, we usually don't vote to get rid of one that's been superseded, but this being a statement requires a separate maneuver.
You could, you know, I think that, again, I don't think there was a wrong answer to this question. It's clear that you and Polly are on the same page, but maybe, you know, Rita, Jana and Patrick all think that we should do a policy a week expressing our concerns about the world.
Sounds, sounds perfect. Mariah, could we put this on for August then, please? And we can see what they would want. And it would not have, it wouldn't be for a first read. It would be something that the school committee would just take up with one vote, correct? Doesn't require any first read status?
No.
Policy.
Correct.
Okay, so we just have to put it on as an action item for, or.
And I would just simply explain to the school committee that it's been absorbed by the, the student handbook. And the student handbook, you know, directs, is includes, in addition to all this, prescriptive what to do and what circumstances.
Sounds really good. Taking these then, because I presume that these were related in, at least thematically, but were kind of linked. 3.7 is, that's my dogs in the, I may have to mute myself here. 3.7, the drug-free workplace, if we could take that one out of order, is this back to the question of the staff substance abuse violence policy, Carolyn?
It is, yep. And as I was going through, I just made little tweaks to it, like replacing district with department and being more observant of gender. So, I mean, I do have some little edits to it if, when Mariah gets a chance to pull it up. Very minor, no meaning changes at all. And yes, Ed, it was on here, thinking that it might be merged with a violence and substance abuse. So in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th paragraph where it said school committee, I believe it's more in line with the new statute for that to be the superintendent. And the rest are just being more gender appropriate and department instead of district.
You're required to have this policy as a condition of your federal grant when your superintendent signs the federal grant application once a year. She has, one of the certifications she has to make is that you have a drug-free workplace.
Is that we have a drug-free workplace or a drug-free workplace policy?
Hopefully, they're the same.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully that they're the same. And I think that the answer is, I don't have the certificate in front of me. I'm going to guess that it's going to say that it's a drug-free workplace. That is, the federal government wants more than the piece of paper. They want it enforced.
No, I get that, but how do you establish that short of testing?
No, you don't establish it short of testing, but on the other hand, if, you know, the teachers in the teacher's room decide during last period on Fridays, well, you know, choke up. The superintendent can't say, oh, I'm not going to do anything about that. You know, unfortunately, from time to time, employees do get themselves involved in substance abuse-related matters on a criminal level and also on a personal level. You know, we've all heard about the teacher who puts a little something in the water bottle. And when we become aware of those situations, we have, you know, we have to deal with them.
John, your opinion, do you think that on the section that says notice to employees, do you think that we need to add when, where, how this notice is provided to employees?
No, I think that that's more, no, I think that that's getting really prescriptive and it may be that you decide the best place to do it is by way of an email once a year at the beginning of the school year. Another possibility is that you might have it in an employee handbook. I defer to you in terms of, and I want to give you the flexibility, you just have to put it for the time being on an annual calendar. At, you know, the first of September, you will mail this, you will send this email to everybody in the school or in the first, you know, I don't believe we have an employee handbook. Some of my school systems have developed employee handbooks. And, you know, it could be included in an employee handbook in the future. I mean, if some people were going to be around for the next two years, we could talk about an employee handbook.
Sonya and I have started to craft an employee handbook. It is something we've thought about, we've collaborated on, we have a draft. We haven't, yes. We haven't worked on it in a bit because COVID-19 has, has us all, you know, running in different directions than we ever planned and a lot more peas on our plates. So, but we have a really good first draft. Am I right, Sonya?
I would agree.
Yeah, it's quite good. And we looked at exemplars out there and we pulled things together. We were, we worked feverishly on it for a bit. And then we dropped it like a hot potato because there were more pressing matters. But we would be happy to continue to work on it and share it.
Yeah, and I think Carolyn had put much of the HR pieces in there also.
Please forgive me, Carolyn also worked on it feverishly. We are three workaholics. And that's what we do in our free time. We're working on an employee handbook, the first one in the history of the district. Department, school department.
I'm happy to take it up before October if it gets finished before October.
That gives us a good target, so we can definitely, and I think we'll, we'll have to add pieces now that we're in mid-phase three of a pandemic and phasing might go in and out. So we now have to add a whole, whole new area.
Yep.
Are there any other changes that anyone would like to, Polly, John, want to propose to the drug-free workplace policy? Thank you very much for your work on that, Carolyn. Since we are not only going sequentially backwards, but we're still sticking within the same theme, may we go to 3.6, which is the violence or the creation of violence and substance abuse policy for staff. I don't see any draft. I do see the notes. Is this something that we are pursuing or is this going to be with the statement that we just presume is addressed somewhere else, Carolyn?
Yes, the latter.
That is, we're just going to presume that it's addressed somewhere else, so we don't need to put it on a future agenda?
That's my understanding from the discussions today, yes.
Okay, perfect. Perhaps that we can, yes.
Can I ask one clarifying question on 3.7? We don't have that on for a first read this evening at the regular meeting. Should I add that to August for a first read?
I'm sorry, yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
And 3.6, we don't ever need to take up again. We don't even have, so that's easy. Maybe perhaps we could just go up to 3.1 and begin taking them in order again. Human capital management policy is there. I looked through. Thank you so much, Carolyn, for this as well. I don't know if anyone has. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts, additions, et cetera, to this one, I didn't have any. I think we've all kind of looked at it.
The only comment I would make is that, in the section that says authorization, superintendent or designate, it's the superintendent.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, I think that we, when designate, and it's also something that's on this agenda, John, the designate element came up in terms of what to do with a superintendent, we don't have a policy for addressing incapacitated superintendents.
And I don't have a problem with, when we get to that, talking about identifying somebody as the acting superintendent.
Okay.
But, but Laurie owns the, Laurie owns the principal, and it's not something that she can, does, you know, oh, I let a committee pick the principal.
Okay.
I let the school committee pick the principal. She owns, under the state law, she, the principal, she owns it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Would you like me to delete that?
You have that, Mariah?
Would you like me to delete it?
In every, I count 1, 2, I count 3 incidents in the first sentence of the first 3 paragraphs under authorization. So if we.
Did I get them all?
There's the next paragraph, right? The superintendent or designate?
Sorry, 4th paragraph, too. And then going down the first paragraph in hiring protocol, first sentence. First sentence and application descriptions and postings. First sentence under appointment principle. The.
Oh, and up one.
And then, yeah, it's kind of a long sentence, but the second to the last line, it appears again. And then, the next page, the second line, it appears twice. Fourth line, it appears again.
It appears also in the preceding paragraph.
Mariah, do you have a Ctrl F feature that you can make sure you get them all?
Boy, I don't know how to do that. But I will.
There's a little magnifying glass in the top row of icons, if that helps, and it's a find replace, but you might also be able to find and delete. It doesn't mark it as edited, though, it just deletes it.
Do I just hit, oh, replace up here? And do replace nothing?
You may.
Can you replace it, can you replace it with, or designate with a strike through?
No, if you want the edit to be seen, then you'll need to just use the find tool here to just go to each one, and then manually delete each one, but at least you'll find them. If you try to replace, the, it won't, the school committee won't be able to see that you've struck something from the policy, that the editing tool doesn't work.
I wonder if it's actually deleting it, though. Okay, well, I'll go through and do this on my own. You guys don't have to sit here and watch me, I feel bad.
Any other? Anything else, John?
Those are responsibilities of the superintendent. It's her authority under state law, but it's not an authority that she can give away to, you know, it's, heavy wears the crown.
Okay. Are any other changes that you want to note, need to?
No.
Take place, we went through, we've gone through this one before, I don't know if there are any other. We, you're good?
Okay.
I don't know what this one is on for, but if it's not on for first read tonight, Mariah, it can be on for first read for August?
Human capital management?
Please.
That is on for a second read tonight.
Oh, all right, perfect. 3.2, personnel management system policy. Thank you again, Carolyn. Anything here?
Just a few changes there, Ed, and mainly it's addition of non-fraternization and lining up background checks to be consistent with those in the human capital management policy. And then, making sure that each references the other between the 3.1 and 3.2.
Anything? From your perspective, John? Polly? No, okay. May we also keep that one on? Is that, I'm gonna guess that, sorry, I had to keep switching between agendas.
That's on for a first read this evening.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. 3.3, employment contract template.
Really, the only change from last week, as discussed at the meeting, was the addition of the last sentence in the introduction, where it was suggested that we add wording saying that if this template is silent on something, that school committee policy directs.
Is, John, is that too specific? Because it relies on, if there isn't a policy, then it relies on a policy being formed to address the question. If you delete policy and just say, "School Committee," is that sufficient?
I'm back.
Did something say I'm back?
I did, no one noticed, but I was totally booted off, and it took me so long to get back on, I was getting that unstable connection.
Oh, okay. That's fine, that suggestion is fine.
Okay. Did you catch that, Mariah?
Yes, so we approved that, that statement that she changed is good.
So, in the, the statement, we will, we will delete policy, so that it will read, "School Committee will direct implementation."
Okay. Carolyn, can you make that change? Because I don't have a working document of this.
And I suppose we should insert a definite article before it to read, "The School Committee." Anything?
I missed that, what are we adding?
So, we are adding a "the," but in the last sentence, it reads, which was added, and it says, "Where this template is silent on particular items," which, perfect sense to anticipate it, but it says, "School Committee policy will direct implementation."
Yes, we spoke about that in the past, yep.
Yep, I'm just suggesting that, that may be a, that may hamper things or delay things further, because it requires that there already be a specific policy. So, if it's silent on something in an area that there isn't a specific policy, it requires the creation of a policy first to be able to address it.
Yes, beyond October, Ed.
Oh, anyway, I, maybe no one will ever read any policies.
I'm just gonna throw them all away.
That's fine. Anything else on this one?
No.
Anyone?
No.
Okay. 3.5, I'm gonna take it out of order, because I, I know that we did this one, and was there an addition that was made to 3.5? Is that why it's on?
There was no addition made. It was just asked to be reviewed one more time.
As a second read tonight, at the regular meeting.
Yep, correct.
So, we're good with that one, which leaves us only then with the creation of a policy that would designate responsibility in case of emergency. Is this something that we can bang out a draft of right now, John, or would you prefer, does, do you have another district that has sample language, or?
I do not have another district that has sample language that I'm aware of, because all of my other districts, even Foster-Gloucester, I shouldn't say that, Foster doesn't, is similar to you, and they don't have a policy that I'm aware of. Foster-Gloucester is a little bigger than you, and they have an assistant superintendent, so it's pretty obvious who the next person is.
Is this something, Pat, that the school committee would even want to take up, or would you, Polly, would you have any suggestions for who would be the, the designate, the designate at that point? Would it be the principal?
Yes, that's appropriate.
Right, I guess it would be, if we needed to assign an interim superintendent for longer times, I think we would. I don't know. I mean, if she was just incapacitated for a week, the principal could handle it, but if something happened and she was incapacitated for six months, we would probably want to get an interim.
Why don't we, why don't we simply say that, yeah?
I like that.
Something to the effect of, in the event that the superintendent is incapacitated, or unable to perform the duties of the superintendent, comma, the principal shall assume the duties of the superintendent.
Can't hear you.
A, comma, the school committee may, no comma, appoint an acting superintendent. It's not an interim, it's an acting, an acting superintendent in its discretion. And then it's common, it's, it's common sense, if Laurie's gonna be back in five days, right, you know, Sonia will hold the fort down for five days. On the other hand, if we're not sure when Laurie's gonna come back, and it's gonna be a long, grueling, hard, you know.
A bad ski accident.
Right, you know, you may wish to appoint an, an acting superintendent, but until you get a resignation or a death out of Laurie, you have a superintendent. So it's only an acting superintendent.
And I know some districts will contact RISA, our, the State Association, for a list of retired superintendents who would, you know, would step in at a moment's notice.
Yeah, we did an acting superintendent, we did an acting superintendent in Charahoe when Barry Ritchie died.
Right. That was Jane Daly, right?
Yes.
Did you get the language, Mariah? At one point, John faded out, and I.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, there was something after, "The principal shall assume the duties of the superintendent," but then I.
Shall assume the duties of the superintendent, period.
Yeah.
Plus, the, the school committee may also
Yep.
appoint an acting superintendent, period.
And.
And it's up to you, people, use your common sense.
You had added the prepositional phrase, "in its discretion."
Yes.
Yeah, I used the word "may" in the sentence, and I think "may" and "in its discretion" are redundant.
So, do we have that one?
Is there any possibility that someone could email me your version, so I can make sure that's the same as what I got done?
Mariah, why don't you email me what you wrote, since I didn't write down what I said, and between the two of us, we'll get it. Is this on the agenda for tonight?
It is not as a first draft, it would, to be a first read in August.
You would send me, send me what you got, and you and I will fix it, and put it on for the first read. And it's a very simple policy, but it's actually a very important policy in your tiny, in your tiny district.
Thank you.
That addresses the last item on the agenda, is there anything, is there any public input? I don't know if there's any public who are, members of the public who are.
Ed, may I ask one more clarifying question on 3.8?
Please.
Was it decided that we would have that as an action item to retitle it, or was it decided that we would have it on as a potentially retitling it or retiring it?
I think retiring it is what we are going to do, but it would be an action item, not a first read, because it's not a policy.
Okay.
Anything else, about, anything on tonight's agenda from anyone? Polly, is there?
You want to make a motion?
Before you do, Polly and Ed, one of the things that I wanna just quickly go back to is, we kind of did a little, almost a prioritization of policies that are impacted by the statute, and the school budget, we kind of had, now that we've finished that, if we go to our next level of priority, there are some policies that need to be worked on, and I don't know, John, if other districts have done this, and it has more to do with roles that have been shifted to the principal in regards to educational administration, manager of the school, school property. We're kind of at that level now, so I'm just bringing it up as a possibility for future agendas.
Thank you, I don't, again, you know, I am happy to meet weekly, if people want throughout the summer to knock these all off the list. I see 1, 2, 3, 4 that have been assigned, that 2 is priority, and I would think that it might be reasonable to be able to get those at one meeting, would you think?
Possibly.
Possibly, we, ambitiously, maybe we can start, but we could certainly put those on for the next meeting, and we can develop a, and I don't, I realize that it is summertime, and that people may prefer not to meet every week, I suspect that I'd prefer not to meet every week, but if we have to meet every week, I'm happy, you know, have to do what we have to do.
Every other week.
So, every other week, whatever sort of schedule people are comfortable with, I will rely on Mariah to be the interlocutor in terms of setting those, and we'll see how it, sorry, John, yes, please.
I would just add, I am excited and impressed that Laurie and Sonia have been working on a handbook. I was not aware of that, I think that's great, and to the extent that it can be done, you know, this is a very good committee, and I think this committee as a group accomplishes a lot. You know, I would love to accomplish as much as we can between now and October.
I agree. I think we've made a lot of headway.
Mostly thanks to you all, Carolyn and Mariah especially.
And board docs.
Yes.
So, John, are you saying you want to see something along the lines of a policy for the principals' roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, that would be, that, that would be helpful, if you shoot me an email, the person who is the repository of all things policy in the office for all of our clients all over the state has more or less become Sean, and so forth, that's why he's actually doing the Coventry School Committee policy meeting at the same time that I'm doing. time that I'm doing this meeting. If, if there is anything that exists in the state, he will know about it.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And, and then Laurie and I will take a look at the other one and decide an appropriate time to bring that to the committee, the student handbook, I'm sorry, the employee handbook.
Right, and we do have some sections to add, and Carolyn, you and I had a discussion right before this meeting, too. This is the perfect time to roll out a staff handbook.
Right, beginning of the school year. I also would encourage you, if you're going to do that, if you send me a draft before it goes to this committee, so that the administration is all on the same page.
Yeah, and it really, it's a useful tool on so many levels.
Sounds good.
All right.
We have a motion, Polly? Okay, I don't know, I think she was on mute, but I believe that I led a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
We are then adjourned at 4:47. Thank you so much. See you all in a couple of minutes.
Bye, everybody. Thank you for your hard work.